Now I can hear you guys. And now I lost my video.
We see you now.
I've got to, if I go cap to speak, then it, then it goes, then I lose my video. Okay, okay, then we're good. So you can see me, you can hear me. Okay, I think I probably, I owe you to get after we're done all this stuff. Okay, thank, yeah, bye bye.
So Scott, we're waiting, oh, it's five o'clock now.
A couple of seconds more and then I'll give you the, go ahead.
Okay, okay, I'm just gonna step away. Now you just shut it. Why am I crooked? Hi, this is your computer, so I don't know why it's doing that. Why would it make it look like it's sideways? I guess I'm sideways. I'm in my husband's music studio and this is his studio computer. I don't know why it would have me laying down sideways.
We can begin now.
Okay, um. Today I'll be chairing the meeting. I'm one of the vice chairs, Diane Ono. Dr. Mugish, she is chairman of issues on the call, but for various reasons, he'll, he'll, he asked me to chair it. Thank you for attending today's public hearing regarding the 2021 reapportionment commission's proposed legislative and congressional reapportionment plans. Could the secretary please confirm which commissioners are present?
Vice Chair Ono.
Here.
Commissioner Chip Chase. Commissioner John. Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Chairman Mugish.
Here.
Commissioner Nakoto.
Here.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Here.
Commissioner Onaka.
Present.
Commissioner Rathblad. Vice Chair, all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Chip Chase.
Thank you. The commission is holding public hearings to provide an opportunity for interested persons to submit views, arguments, or data orally or in writing related to the proposed reapportionment plans for the Hawaii State Legislature. The proposed legislative plan and Hawaii's two United States congressional districts, the proposed congressional plan. The proposed legislative plan reflects the allocation of the total number of members of each house of the state legislature among the four basic island units, namely, one, the island of Hawaii, two, the islands of Maui, Lanai, and Molokai, Molokai, and Kaholave, three, the island of Oahu, and all other islands not specifically enumerated, and four, the islands of Kauai and Ni'ihau, using the total number of permanent residents in each basic island unit and computed by the method known as the method of equal proportions, except that no basic island unit shall receive less than one member in each house. The proposed legislative plan also reflects the apportionment of single-member districts within each basic island unit and redistricting guided by constitutional criteria. District lines were drawn to minimize population deviations between districts, preserve traditional communities, avoid canoe districts spanning multiple basic island units, and minimize the disruption to existing districts. The proposed congressional plan reflects the apportionment of two members among single-member districts so that the average number of persons in the total population counted in the 2020 United States Census per member in each district is as nearly equal as practicable. The reapportionment plans are available, are available online at elections.hawaii.gov. Additionally, the reapportionment plans and maps are available for public inspection at one Hawaii County Clerk's Office in Hilo and Kona, two, Hilo Public Library, three, University of Hawaii at Hilo Library, four, Kailua Kona Public Library, five, Keala Kikua Public Library, six, Keao Public School and Library, seven, La Pahoi Hoi Public and School Library, eight, Na'alehu Public Library, nine, Pahoah Community and School Library, ten, Thelma Parker Public and School Library, eleven, Maui County Clerk's Office, twelve, Hana Public School and Library, thirteen, Lahaina Public Library, fourteen, Molokai Library, fifteen, Lanai Public and School Library, sixteen, Kauai County Clerk's Office, seventeen, Hanapepe Public Library, eighteen, Kapaa Public Library, nineteen, Koloa Public Library, twenty, Princeville Public Library, twenty-one, Hawaii State Library, twenty-two, City and County Honolulu Clerk's Office, twenty-three, Kaimiki Library, twenty-four, Office of Elections, twenty-five, Kapolei Public Library, twenty-six, Millilani Public Library, twenty-seven, Pearl City Public Library, twenty-eight, Kahuku Public and School Library, twenty-nine, Kani'ohi Public Library. Pursuant to a public notice that was published on November 9, 2021, the reapportionment commission gave public notice that it will be conducting its public hearings remotely using interactive conference technology. The public may view the video and audio of the public hearing through a video conference link available online at elections.hawaii.gov. In the alternative, the public may listen to the audio of the hearing through a telephone number that is available online at elections.hawaii.gov. Each public hearing will seek to focus on a particular geographic area, but the public may comment on any aspect of the proposed legislative plan or proposed congressional plan. Views, arguments, or data orally or in writing may be submitted at any public hearing or mailed to the chair of the 2021 reapportionment commission at 802 LeHua Avenue, Pearl City, Hawaii, 96782, or by email at reapportionment@hawaii.gov. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted on the Office of Elections website at elections.hawaii.gov. As a reminder to the public, your microphone will be muted until you are called on. Public testimony. We will now move on to public testimony. A list of testifiers who have submitted their names before the hearing has been added to the chat. As technical issues may arise, we will give each testifier a few moments to try and resolve any connection issues. However, if the issues cannot be resolved, we will have to move on to the next testifier. If you would like to testify, please click Raise Hand under Reactions on Zoom. If you are joining us by phone, please press star nine. When recognized, please unmute your microphone before speaking. You may also turn on your video at this time. For the record, please state your first and last name and the items you will be testifying on. For those testifiers joining us by phone, we will not have your name and will be identifying you by the last four digits of your phone number. To ensure that we will have sufficient time to hear all testimony, each testifier will have three minutes to testify. Once your time has expired, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and we will move on to the next testifier. Would the secretary please announce the first testifier?
First testifier is Corey Harden.
We can move on to the next testifier.
Next testifier is Russell Ruderman.
We can move on.
The next testifier is Ralph Boye.
Hello, I'm here. Hello, a little bit better than yesterday, thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify to the commission today. On behalf of a group of concerned citizens on the Big Island, I submitted a House community plan and an updated version of that plan. I've also submitted written testimony and to consider that testimony, I will not be repeating it here tonight. I got involved in a redistricting because I live in Puna and I looked at the plan and decided it was clearly wrong to dilute Puna's voice by placing portions of our district into two Hilo-dominated districts. It is clearly wrong also to split communities like Hawaii Paradise Park and Orchid Land between two different House districts. I could just make those comments and ask you to rectify these wrongs. I am asking you to rectify these wrongs, but the question becomes, how do you do that? When I see something wrong, I try to fix it. Actions speak louder than words. I soon learned that many other people shared my concerns or had similar concerns in their own districts. So we came together and we drafted a plan that resolves our concerns. We gave due consideration to the 2020 census figures, ensuring that the major population areas on our island get equal representation. Two House seats for Hilo, two for Kona, two for Puna, and one House seat in Ha'umakua, Waimea, Kohala area. We did not design this plan to favor or disfavor any incumbent. We left their resident locations out in our discussions. We did our very best to prepare a plan that is fair to all residents on our island. This is not an easy task considering the need to create districts with nearly equal population numbers containing residents who share similar concerns. There were a number of limitations that added to the difficulty. The unfathomable designs of some of the census blocks, unmarked geographic boundaries, the need to be able to drive in one district while going through another, our limited roadways and long driving conditions. Though we spent many hours trying to come up with the best plan possible. We devised this plan a number of times. Our plan is not perfect, but it is clearly better than the proposed Hawaii reapportionment commission plan. We hope that you will recognize these efforts and objectively consider our plan. When we are done, when we were done, we noticed that there's a beautiful sign of hope, an unintentional acknowledgement of our attention to the mana of the Big Island. If you look closely at our plan, you'll see that four of the seven House districts meet up in the center of the island. All four of those districts started.
Ralph, thank you for your testimony and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I can't, oh, excuse me, can I make a, there's a problem with one of the people who wants to testify.
Who is it or what is the problem?
Yes, this is Corey Harden. We currently have a thunderstorm going on on the Ha'umakua District, and she's trying to get online. She's not able to do it. If the commission could please help by posting in the chat the phone number that she can call in on, we will get that number to her.
Scott, will you be doing that?
She can call 453-8683.
553-86.
No, four, four, five, three.
What they need to do is unmute her.
Okay. Oh, she's there now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I just got a message on my phone that she's there now and you can, all you have to do is unmute her. And her, her phone number ends in 7747.
Oh, I see her.
Okay, I'm, so thank you very much.
So Scott, are you gonna unmute her or?
Yeah. So we can unmute her now.
Thank you.
Okay, could you call the next, next testifier, please?
So you want to do her or you want to take her at the end?
Oh, I think we should do the testifiers in order.
Okay, the next testifier is Ma, Maquis Murray knowing.
Okay, let's move on.
Next testifier is Barton. Okay, next testifier is Becky Gardner.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, sorry, I'd like to yield my line, my place of lying to Corey Harden because I believe she's a Big Island resident and I think her voice is more important at this rate.
Okay, that's fine. Corey Harden, let's call on her.
Next as far as Corey Harden.
Hello. Hi, this is Corey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, all right, um, so Corey Harden from Hilo, appreciate the opportunity to testify and your service on the commission. I have three concerns. Incarcerated people, new military numbers that might require new maps and community-drawn maps. On the incarcerated people, if I understand correctly from common cause, those people are not being counted where they should be at their home address because the commission did not direct the demographer to utilize the home addresses. And it's probably too late to fix that, and I think that is extremely unfortunate and should not have happened. On the military numbers, as you know, the commission extracted about 64,000 military. New data indicates about double that amount. There was also a question because the military numbers declined by almost one-third since 2012. So the military population only declined 5% and numbers from Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism were drastically different from commission numbers. It's unfortunate that the commission only got new numbers late in the process and only got them because one commissioner happened to have personal contacts in the military. It's also unfortunate that it was testifiers, not the chair, who first notified the commission that there were new numbers. There's some question about how to handle military dependence and whether the new numbers shift the House seat from Oahu to O'Wha'ee Island and require remapping for both islands, a huge task. These questions should be explored in meetings open to the public, not behind closed doors. Lack of openness only increases the chances of a court challenge. Last, on the community-drawn map, you heard Ralph Boye describe the process they went through. I hope you will give due consideration to resident proposals. And thank you to the person who yielded some time to me. Mahalo.
Hey, thank you, Corey, and I'm glad you were able to at least call in. Scott.
Next testifier is Becky Gardner.
Okay, hi, everybody, I'm just here really quick. I just recently submitted some testimony and, you know, the, really my message is for the public. I was made privy to the information that was recently released from IndoPACOM with the dependent data. I know that's what we were waiting on based on what was discussed at the October 28 meeting. And I think that dependent data was provided to a on November 8th, but it hasn't been put in the record. So I just felt a personal responsibility to make sure this data gets in the record because I think there are some excellent people in our public who are doing a lot of hard work to draw maps. And because I had this data available to me, I wanted to make sure it gets out in the sphere and then they could work with that data. Just so we could move this thing, move through the reapportionment process as expeditiously as possible. So for the public, if you look at the public testimony for today's hearing, I have a link to the data that was provided by IndoPACOM on the dependent data and also a screenshot of an email summarizing what those new numbers are, which as Corey had indicated before, is nearly twice as much as the extraction that was made on the maps that are drawn. And, and that's all I have. I don't want to hear the buzzer, which is one thing. Maybe if you could just lessen the volume of that buzzer or change the tune, it sort of feels like I'm being punished. So if you can make that small adjustment, that would, I think would be better for the public. Okay, that's all, thank you.
You, thank you, Becky.
Mommy.
Next testifier. Shannon Matson.
Aloha, commissioners, nice to see you all again. Um, I just had a couple of technical things. I know a few folks are trying to get onto the call. I don't know if they're stuck in the waiting room. I heard a couple of folks mentioned to me that they tried to join us yesterday and they were stuck in the waiting room. And as Corey mentioned, we are having a thunderstorm and some technical issues, so some people cannot access the wifi. I was unable to find the phone number on your website easily. I see the Zoom link, maybe for the future meetings, there can be a phone call number. So folks who want to tune in via phone can do that. Maybe I just missed it and it's obvious to others. I'm hoping also that there might be some opportunity for folks to testify in public. I know that that hasn't really been the case due to COVID, but I'm, I'm feeling like there is some disenfranchisement happening just because some of us are not super text savvy and especially out in Puna, a lot of us have some connectivity issues. And that was not any of my testimony that I was planning to give tonight. That was just something that has just come up as I'm trying to help people navigate and get on this call to join on right now. So, okay, so now I'm running out of time, but I just wanted to reiterate, I was born and raised on the Big Island. I currently reside in State House District 3, State Senate District 2. I have a lot of concerns about both of the technical committee's maps being proposed for those areas. I, I'm getting a message. I think Mary Marvin might want to testify too, and I don't know if she was able to even figure out how to raise her hand, but she is on the call. Um, okay, so I have witnessed what being in a split subdivision has done to our community having lived in one such district for the last decade. I've been advocating from the beginning of this process to please avoid splitting our communities apart in these large subdivisions, especially in Puna. Puna is one of the largest, fastest-growing, lowest-income areas of the entire state. Our district has hundreds of miles of unpaved roads. Many of the residents live off the grid, some without clean or running water, no electricity, no access to broadband or wifi and severely limited and/or long response times to emergency services. Our current representative lives in the most high-income and suburban part of the district with the largest voter base. And the rest of our extremely rural district has drastically different needs and we're spread out across the rest of the district, which is one of the largest districts in the state. It is the largest district in the entire state as far as House districts go. It's extremely challenging for any one person to be able to address such diverse needs and concerns across a district like that in a meaningful way. So while the current map proposed by the technical committee is going to put my neighborhood of Hawaiian Acres finely and entirely into one district, the problem is now shifting to splitting apart Orchid Land Estates and Hawaiian Paradise Park. All of these neighborhoods have similar concerns and are struggling with neighborhood board issues with historically adversarial and a lack of consent. Chair, would you bring it a little bit over since the first part of my testimony was technical issues?
Why don't you just finish your sentence, what you were just saying at the end?
Okay, um, I just, I can't imagine how all of these problems will be compounded by drawing lines that separate parts of these districts from each other. And I also wanted to address something that Representative Lowen said yesterday, but I will try to submit that via writing. Mahalo, Nui.
Thank you, thank you, Shannon.
Next testifier is Philip Barnes.
Okay, yeah, aloha to you commissioners. A couple of main issues I'd like to raise here. The first one is the new figures from the Department of Defense in terms of non-resident military, mainly living on Oahu. It's incomprehensible to me why a non-resident would be counted in any compilation that's creating new voter districts. Seems to me with the proper extraction, our island should definitely be able to get an eighth district, which I know unfortunately will start this whole process over again. So that's my first point. The second point is I'd like to advocate in behalf of the community plan that has been mentioned by several people. The main point that I like about this community plan is that it keeps contiguous groups together in terms of the demographics of the members that live in one given area are kept in the same district. I live in the Wainaku area of Hilo. Presently, I'm in House District 1, which stretches all the way past to N'oka'a, and I only live three blocks from the downtown post office in, in Hilo. So I like the new District 1 that was created by this community plan because it tends to be more of a suburban Hilo district in terms of population both living to the north of Hilo, Malka of downtown Hilo, and south of downtown Hilo. And so this seems to be a more homogeneous group to me than the present District 1. So that's the points I'd like to make, and also obviously HPP and the other subdivisions kept in the same district. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Next testifier is Deborah Ward.
There we go. Um, good evening. My name is Deborah Ward. Thank you for having this.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Deborah Ward. Thank you for having this meeting. I live in Mountain View and I, my representative lives in Hilo and I have never once seen my representative in all the years that I've gone to community meetings. And the reason that I'm concerned about that is that I feel that this representative does not represent our area, or does he have any interest in doing so? I am a resident of Hawaii Island and I've been here for forty years. And I like the alternative plan proposed, the community plan proposed by Ralph Boye. Because it does keep our group, our subdivisions together, our farmlands together in the more rural areas. And it keeps the urban areas less split apart. And I like the fact that it provides smaller deviations in population among the house districts. It was created with the seven house districts and I do urge the commission to reconsider the allotment moving forward because it's clear that the percentage of military people is not being presented properly to the decision makers. And I think that it's time that we have take those numbers into account and recalculate the extractions. So I ask that you support the community plan moving forward as it seems to be the best option. And I appreciate your time and thank you very much for having this meeting.
Thank you, Deborah.
Next testifier is Mary Marvin.
Aloha. My name is Mary Marvin Porter and I have a home in Hawaii Paradise Park. I've lived on the island since nineteen ninety-four and have a special events video business, which has given me unique acquaintance with communities around the island. I support the community plan updated. I'm opposed to the commission's house map that puts four fifths of HPP in with Hilo. Upon informing residents of this plan, it's met with shock and total opposition by HPP residents. That the idea of being put in with Hilo just does not make any sense to them at all. We private subdivisions in Puna have very different concerns from those of Hilo. We have enormous problems in regards to unpaved roads, dust mitigation, road maintenance, and also in the maintenance of the community association boards. Also, the highway from Kailua to Pahoa daily has one and two mile traffic backups at two intersections. We need a representative that has lived in this area and familiar with our situation. In the meeting last night, there was some surprise to our community map having North Hamakua to North Kohala together in House Seven. This area is large acreage of farms as well as the towns in that area. Their homes with residents involved in agriculture, growing vegetables, flowers, tea plants, bamboo, food trees, cattle, horses. And I think that our community map has done a good job of keeping agricultural concerns together and urban areas together. I would also like to request some clarification about what the commission is doing in regards to the disputed numbers for the military non-resident. There was mention that somehow you're looking into it, but it really wasn't clear what you're doing and what your timeline or what your plan is in that regard. Could you please give us some clarification?
Are you done with your testimony, Mary? David Rosenbrock, he's our staff person. David, could you give an update to everybody? Because I believe we're waiting for the Department of Defense to get back to us.
Yeah, we reached out to Dr. Bob Campbell and and Davis last week or the week before last, before Thanksgiving. Because the data that was given to Commissioner Kennedy, there was no way to link the dependence to the sponsors, right? So we don't know if the sponsors were all here, partially here, whatever. So we're trying to have them come back to us. Both the gal that worked with Commissioner Kennedy and the guy that we've been working with together, to give us an answer on the database. There was a problem in the way the database question was asked. The difference between us and Commissioner Kennedy. So we're trying to clear that up and we're waiting for them to get back to us. We're gonna rattle the cage again tomorrow and see what they're going to do, but that's where we're at.
Thank you, David.
What do you mean by sponsors? Did he say sponsors?
Sponsors of the military, active duty military and the dependence, right? Because the sponsor is the member and the dependent goes with the sponsor.
Can I add something, Vice Chair Ono?
Yes, certainly.
So I think it's really important for everyone to understand that both people that we are working with, the woman who sent information to Commissioner Kennedy and Dr. Campbell, who sent information to David Rosenbrock. They both work for the same organization. They're both Indo Paycom. And they're both pulling data from the same database, the D R database. So they need to explain why the numbers are different because again, they're from the same military agency using the same database. So we can't draw conclusions until they can explain why the same company or the same division department using the same data is giving two different sets of numbers. So we're waiting for that explanation.
How long ago have you been in contact with them about this? Well, he said, I think David Rosenbrock just said the week before Thanksgiving was when contact was made.
The Friday before Thanksgiving.
Chair, is it okay if I elaborate?
Sure.
So I appreciate everyone's enthusiasm and I have to tell you that David and his team are taking this very seriously. Bart and Becky, you guys have done an amazing job of bringing it to everyone's attention. I spoke to Anna, the person that, so these people are exactly in the same office. They're not giving us different information. We just pulled information more currently because people had such concerns. So bottom line, Dr. Campbell is off today. But they offered, and I think I sent an email to David, they've offered now, they're both pulling numbers from DMDC. I didn't get what that acronym stands for, but Dr. Campbell is waiting on DMDC to elaborate on exactly why these numbers are so different this time around. So the military was obviously also surprised by the deviation. So they're doing their due diligence, but Campbell was off today. And the girl that I work with spoke to him yesterday. So they're all on it, but they asked today if David would appreciate having the direct access to this DMDC people or department because those are the ones that are giving us, throwing us the awful numbers. So I emailed back saying absolutely, I'm sure David would love to have a direct relationship with whoever is giving us all of these numbers. So know that they're diligently working on it. And David, you might want to reiterate, I mean, we all know that there's some deviation. You're seemingly confident that it's not going to make that big of a difference. But we have to continue moving forward and hearing everybody's testimony. And at the end of the day, I mean, if we had to stop everything and wait for those numbers to be clarified, it would throw this whole process off. So I guess I just want to reiterate that we, everybody is very aware that David is doing the best that he can to make sure we get this information. I'm just supporting him and trying to move it along a little bit quicker than it has recently been, you know, delivered. But again, the military obviously has huge drama right now, but they know we're on it. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, David, we're not stopping the process, even if we know that we may have to redo some numbers because it just puts us that much farther back. I mean, we have to keep going, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Scott, let's get the next testifier on, please.
Next testifier is Jacqueline Benton-Ching.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
And I'm gonna try to do a visual as well if I can. Let's see. I think that's better. Okay, okay. All right. Hello, everyone. This is Jacqueline Benton-Ching. I am a resident of Puna. I have lived in Hawaii since nineteen sixty-six. I graduated from Kaimaki High School. And I count myself as a local person, having grown up here for most of my life. I believe that the job ahead of us is no easy task, especially with the military numbers and the quandary about who and what and why they were counted differently. Be that as that may, well, we do have an excellent plan in place that will help us navigate the Big Island's many challenges. And so again, I encourage you to look at the community plan that has been revised, that puts like-minded communities and agricultural places together and the urban and suburban areas, although we really don't have that much urban sprawl here. But it keeps those areas together. And that really is what Hawaii Island wants. That's what the Big Island people want. They want to stay together with their families and friends. And yes, people go all the way to Pahala to see auntie and uncle and they live in Hawaiian Acres. I have family all over the island and I would want to make sure that all of the folks have equal representation. And that's what I'm hoping you will decide on. Thank you so much for the opportunity to convey my testimony today. Thank you for all your hard work and I appreciate this transparency that you're attempting to give us. Aloha.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Scott?
The next testifier is Ariel Murphy.
I see Ariel is on, but, oh, there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to testify. My name is Ariel Murphy. I live in Orchidland. I've been a Punatec for more than twenty-five years now. And I've seen how communities like communities were lumped with Hilo. Like agricultural communities were lumped with Hilo and with a community plan submitted by Ralph Boye, we are addressing that. I commend all the people who were involved in drawing up the community plan for their hard work, but right now I would like to yield my time to Shannon Matson. Please recognize Shannon Matson. Thank you.
Scott, is that how, is it? I just don't know if that's how it works.
I believe I have time that I'm entitled to and I would like Shannon to use the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Not really, but
This is not a legislative debate for you to yield time. This is a public hearing.
Right, but can't she have her own time? I mean, she can raise her hand and have her own time too, right?
She already testified.
She already testified. That's why she wants to go over.
Bring her back, I see.
But she didn't finish her testimony.
Excuse me, Ariel. Let's move on. And then if we have time at the end, if this doesn't go much longer, we can go back to Shannon, but let's move on because there are other people who have been waiting.
Next testifier is Sandy Ma.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Sandy Ma with Common Cause Hawaii. I'm not testifying on the substantive matter of the maps, but just on a procedural issue. I do with Common Cause appreciate the transparency and talking about the numbers used for the extraction. But I am slightly concerned about the sunshine law. If this matter is going to come up before a full commission hearing, perhaps to err on the side of caution and abide by the sunshine law to have a commission meeting set to talk about the extraction issue and the data and to do that early as possible within the sunshine law parameters. And also I want to echo Shannon Matson's concerns about having people be able to call in and participate via telephone on the Zoom meeting. I was going through your website and I could not find a number for people to dial in to the Zoom meeting or any other future public hearings. And I do know that on your notice that you said a phone number would be available. And I highly encourage you to put phone numbers on future public hearings in addition to the Zoom link for people to dial in by phone to participate. Thank you so much for all your work in the reapportionment commission. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Scott.
Chair, there are no further testifiers?
Okay, Shannon, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much and thank you Ariel for trying to yield your time to me. I appreciate it. Again, I'm gonna submit this all in writing, so it's, I'll just be as brief as I possibly can. I just wanted to say that I appreciated and agreed with the comment from Representative Lowen. Last night, she stated in essence that any of these plans seem to be trading one set of problems for another. So I do recognize that. And I am, overall, I'm much more in favor of the community plan put forth by Ralph and other members of the public. I believe it's a superior option to the tech committee while acknowledging that, of course, there are some things that are not perfect about it. Reviewing both, it makes more sense to me. Even all of the Puna chopping in the tech committee plan still doesn't compare to the fact that Kaloko Malca is still in District Seven, which is also connected to Havi and Waimea. Having lived in Kona, I can tell you that that just simply doesn't make sense. And I know that, again, we're doing the best we can. But my concern is, are these, all these feedback that you guys are receiving, there's almost infinite possibilities if one is willing to start kind of making some of these adjustments. And I'm wondering how the tech plan will be modified. Is that going to happen? Because I'm appreciating that the community plan was adjusted already, I think, twice since it was first introduced just a couple of days ago to the Hawaii Advisory Council. So they seem to be listening to feedback and providing other workable solutions to the concerns that are being addressed. My question is, when do we get to see any changes or modifications to the tech committee's plan? Is that happening at all times? Is that waiting till after all these testimonies are complete? I just want to know what the process is and I feel like maybe a misunderstanding the procedure. But potentially people might be more agreeable with the tech committee plan if it felt like some of the feedback we were giving was actually being taken into consideration. And we could see some real time changes happening there. And again, forgive me if I'm wrong, maybe those changes are happening and I'm just not aware of it. And again, just reiterating that potentially all of this work seems somewhat futile and I do appreciate Commissioner Kennedy's comments to that effect that you have to keep plugging ahead even with not knowing if we might get the eighth house seat. But I'm hoping that the Big Island will get an eighth house, an eighth house seat and that that will address.
You exceeded the two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Mahalo.
And I would like to, you know, respond, the purpose of this hearing is actually to receive comments and concerns related to the plan. As such, we cannot today answer or otherwise speak to your questions other than to note them for the record. So Scott, there are no further testifiers, right?
That is correct. There's no further testifiers.
Is there anyone out there wanting to raise their hand? If not, we will conclude today's hearing. Thank you all for participating in today's hearing. We're adjourned.